Are we ready, Madam Clerk? Well, good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, members of the Lakewood Police Department, welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, August 19, 2024. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowe. Councilmember Boke.
Here.
Councilmember Brenn Satter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Member Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and now if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women serving this great nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Well, thank you for joining us, all of you who are present tonight, both here physically in the in the audience, as well as those of you observing from home. We welcome you and appreciate your attendance. The first item we have on tonight's agenda, under the Proclamation and Presentation section, is our Police Commissioning and Commendation Ceremony. And for this, I'll call on Chief Smith to join me as we conduct the Oath of Office for the officers. Chief Smith. Well, welcome, officers. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to conduct this Oath of Office and Commissioning Ceremony. And we have, I'll just introduce you first, and then I'll conduct the Oath of Office. I'll stand with you. But just for the audience and their benefit, if you just raise a hand real quick while I call your name, Officer Jeremiah Fuch, Officer Anthony Trugio, Officer Keel Rhodes, Officer Eric Dyer, Officer Wyatt Crumbs, Officer Jonathan Porter, and Officer Jamal Kennedy. Welcome again. We appreciate your service to this great city. So I'm going to ask you, when I put the Oath of Office, I blank, and you'll state your name, do solemnly swear, and we'll go through it that way, and I'll break it up so that it's easily understandable, and we'll take it from there. So if you'll all raise your right hand, please. I state your name. Do you solemnly swear? That I am a citizen of the United States and of the State of Washington? That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States? The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington? And the laws of the City of Lakewood? And will, to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability, truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially, perform the duties of the office of police officer in and for the City of Lakewood in Pierce County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Congratulations, gentlemen, welcome. If I could ask members of the council to come down and join us for a quick footle? So the next portion of our ceremony tonight is the award ceremony. We're going to start with a couple of citizen awards and then roll into our officer awards. I'll call them up, read what the award is about, and then we'll have our photographer take a picture, and then we'll have them stay for just a second if family wants to take photos after that. The first award is for a citizen, Ms. Rebecca Herber. On March 7, 2024, Animal Control Officer Buck responded to a call about a pit bull attack. Upon arrival, she found the pit bull and a smaller white dog loose and attacking a 70-year-old woman who was severely injured. Ms. Herber, a new resident of the area, intervened by using a stick to fend off the pit bull and protect the victim until help arrived. Despite the danger posed by the aggressive pit bull and the smaller dog, Ms. Herber bravely confronted the situation using only a stick to drive the dogs away from the injured victim. Her quick actions and selfless concern for the elderly victim prevented further harm and were crucial in ensuring the victim's safety. The victim, who received significant injuries, including bites and severe bruising, expressed deep gratitude for Rebecca's intervention, noting that her actions likely prevented even more severe injuries or possibly even death. For her exemplary bravery and assistance, Rebecca Herber is hereby awarded a Police Chief Citizen Commendation in recognition of her extraordinary courage, strength, compassion, and competence during this emergency. Our next award is also for a citizen, Mr. Mike Ott. During an elder fraud case investigation, investigator Stephen Moffett and Sean Noble employed a ruse to lure the suspect to Tacoma Towing. Investigators had been searching for this suspect for several months. Mike Ott and the employees of Tacoma Towing assisted with the ruse, helping to convince the suspect to come to Tacoma Towing during several phone conversations. The suspect was taken into custody without incident. Mr. Ott's assistance was crucial to the investigation and facilitated the suspect's arrest. This suspect has been plaguing the vulnerable in our community, doing thefts, and since I was a rookie 20-some years ago, and he's still at it. And so he's one of our most high-profile offenders, and so we greatly appreciate your efforts. For his selfless actions leading to the arrest of a habitual criminal who preys on the elderly and vulnerable, Mike Ott is hereby awarded the Police Chief Citizen Commendation. I can have Officers Julia Wabinga, Dustin Kirkham, and Sergeant David Mullen come forward, please. On November 20, 2023, Officer Wabinga was on patrol when she encountered a suspicious vehicle in the parking lot of the BNI. She reported to dispatch that the vehicle was occupied by two unresponsive males showing signs of narcotic intoxication. The driver eventually woke up, but the male in the front passenger seat did not. Officer Wabinga requested emergency assistance and began lifesaving measures. Narcan was administered after passenger indicated they had both been smoking fentanyl. Officer Kirkham and Sergeant Mullen assisted by removing the driver from the vehicle and performing chest compressions. A total of four doses of Narcan were given before West Pierce Fire arrived and took over lifesaving efforts, successfully restoring a steady pulse and breathing. He was transported to the hospital and survived. For their quick thinking and lifesaving efforts, Officers Wabinga and Kirkham and Sergeant Mullen are hereby awarded the lifesaving award. I have Investigator Bent, Officer Dr. Officer Mahaffey, Officer Wabinga, and Officer Walker come up. On October 31, 2023, Officers Walker, Mahaffey, and Bent responded to a robbery and sexual assault at a massage parlor. The suspect, who posed as a client, threatened the victim with a pistol, zip-tied her, and sexually assaulted her. A neighboring business owner intervened after hearing her screams. The officers canvassed for security footage, preserved key evidence for DNA, and obtained a warrant for the phone while also arranging a sexual assault exam for the victim. Officers Bent, Mahaffey, and Walker demonstrated exceptional dedication in handling the complex scene, preserving physical and DNA evidence, and canvassing the neighborhood for witnesses and security camera footage. Officer Walker conducted a thorough interview with the victim, using language bank services to overcome a language barrier, coordinated the sexual assault exam, and obtained the cellphone warrant. Later, Officers Wabinga, Dr. and Walker located a suspect near the incident site and were able to make an arrest. For the hard work and professionalism displayed by each of these officers, which resulted in justice for the victim and protection of the community from a violent predator, Officers Bent, Dr. Mahaffey, Wabinga, and Walker are hereby awarded the Police Chief Commendation. Officer Daniel Payon, come forward, please. On September 2, 2023, Officer Payon responded to a residence for a welfare check on an elderly resident who lives alone and whose family had been unsuccessful in reaching her. Officer Payon learned that her landline phone was broken, and this was the only method of communicating with her family. Upon learning this, Officer Payon went out of his way and spent his own money to purchase the resident a brand-new landline telephone, so she would be able to communicate with her family again. For his act of selflessness by going above and beyond his normal duties to ensure a vulnerable resident was safe and protected, Officer Payon is hereby awarded the Police Chief's Commendation. And I have Sergeant Painter, Officer Catlett, Noah Dyer, and Investigator Nile Teclamarium come forward. In November of 2023, a known felon was arrested after a pursuit. A warrant was obtained for the vehicle, which led to further investigation and probable cause, to serve a search warrant at his residence in Tacoma. The execution of this search warrant yielded four ballistic vests, four firearms, including an AR pistol, a polymer 80 with a 100-round drum, a suppressor, $4,000 in cash, over a pound of methamphetamine, a quarter pound of fentanyl powder, and 1,000 fentanyl pills. The suspect had a recent gunshot wound that was severely infected and required surgery, so he was admitted to the hospital but escaped before officers could take him back into custody. These award recipients started looking for the suspect again. About a month later, due to their diligence and with the assistance of the Lakewood SRT, the suspect was taken into custody without incident and booked into the Pierce County Jail on numerous felony charges, including robbery, unlawful possession of firearms, unlawful possession of controlled substances with intent to deliver. Following his arrest, search warrants were approved again for his home, a storage area in the garage, and his vehicle. This led to another 10 firearms, substantial quantities of fentanyl, methamphetamine, heroin, and cocaine. Notably, a loaded AK-47 was recovered from his silver Mercedes, a vehicle he had used to evade capture. The successful operation and subsequent recovery of dangerous substances and firearms resulted in bringing to justice an extremely dangerous criminal. For their tireless efforts, bravery, and outstanding performance, Sergeant Painter, Officers Catlett, Dyer, and Teclamarium are hereby awarded the Police Chief's Commendation. Last, but certainly not least, can I have Dr. Ellen Hart come forward, please? Dr. Hart retired and moved to Lakewood in 2001. With advanced degrees in postdoctoral studies in chemistry and engineering, he's continued to contribute to his career field as an adjunct chemistry instructor at Tacoma Community College for over 10 years. Dr. Hart has shared his knowledge and passion with countless students, further enriching our community. Dr. Hart was a founding member of the Lakewood Emergency Response and Preparedness Group in 2004, which played a pivotal role in the development of the city's first emergency management plans through its new police department. And I can recall back then, they were working on the avian flu plans that we thought would never, ever happen, and then, of course, we lived through it in glory detail. For the last 18 years, Dr. Hart has served with distinction on the Public Safety Advisory Committee. He has worked tirelessly through the committee's regular meetings, community outreach, and community events. I think he's single-handedly responsible for the dunk tank that numerous command staff have had to sit through at Summer Fest year after year. He has provided invaluable thought, insight, leadership, and expertise to their important work. In addition to his advisory role, Dr. Hart completed the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, training, and has been a dedicated volunteer in the program, demonstrating his hands-on commitment to community safety. His exemplary service was recognized in 2011 when he received the Governor's Volunteer Award for his outstanding contributions. Today, we celebrate Dr. Hart's remarkable dedication, service, and the profound impact he has had on the Lakewood community. His legacy of service and commitment to public safety will continue to inspire future generations. Thank you, Dr. Hart, for your unwavering dedication to the Lakewood Police Department and the City of Lakewood. We are hereby honored to present this Police Chief Citizen Commendation to Dr. Ellen Hart in recognition of his extraordinary dedication and service. And Chief Smith, if you'd like to say a few words following the excellent, excellent program and accommodation of your officers?
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the mayor and council for taking the time to recognize all of the citizens and our officers for all of the work that they do on a daily basis. Each day, the officers who came before you today do an exceptional job for all of the citizens each and every day, significantly were the events that you saw today. They have done so much for this community that you wouldn't believe. Our response time is down, our crime is down about 37% on a daily basis. We had a problem with stolen vehicles, which is down 67%. So they've been pushing things, trying to make this community better and serve all of you. So at this moment, I'm going to ask you guys to do me one favor, to stand up, turn around, and give them a round of applause, please. Thank you, guys, so much, and we appreciate your attendance. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you, officers, and certainly thank you, members of the community, because good policing starts with community support for their work, and that's evident tonight by all of us present, so thank you again. Next, I would like to call on Deputy Chief Hallie McCurdy with West Pierce Fire and Rescue for the recognition of agencies for fire response. Chief McCurdy.
Well, thank you, guys, for giving me a few moments to thank some of our incredible partners in our community. My name's Hallie McCurdy. I'm the Deputy Chief of Support Services for West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and I am here to talk about an incident that we had back on June 26. We had a very large apartment fire at the Hidden Lake Apartment Complex, and we had about 12 units that were displaced from that fire. And when folks are displaced, that means we need to help them relocate and find some shelter. So the first partner I'd like to call up is Pierce Transit. I have CEO Mike Griffiths and Emergency Manager Rod Chandler, if you guys would come on up here. So this is something that Pierce Transit has been doing for us for as long as I have been in the fire service. When we get folks that are burnt out of their homes, they come and they bring a bus, and if it's cold weather out, if it's hot weather out, whatever horrible weather conditions there might be, they bring a bus out and they let people sit in their bus until we can figure out where they can go next. And so on this particular day, they not only brought the bus, but they also brought snacks, they brought water. They went very much above and beyond for our community, and so until we could find a longer-term solution for them, Pierce Transit was there and willing to help out, and we just really appreciate all that they've done. And so I do have a certificate here, and it's a certificate of appreciation presented to Pierce Transit in recognition of your continued partnership, dedication, and commitment to supporting the community during an emergency which displaced residents during the Hidden Lake Apartment Fire on June 26.
So why don't we join with council, with the chief, and our honorees, and take a quick photograph?
I do have one more. I don't know if you guys want to. I do have one more partner that I would like to bring up, and that would be Janta Steele from Little Church on the Prairie. Our emergency management folks have been talking with the folks at Little Church on the Prairie for quite some time, getting a memorandum of understanding that we could potentially use their church as a temporary shelter. So along came the incident on June twenty-sixth, and Pierce Transit helped us out initially, but we needed a little bit longer-term solution. So Little Church stepped up, and they provided a meal for some of the families, and then there were a few families that actually needed some additional help, and they actually let them stay at the church overnight, provided them with overnight support. And we really just appreciate you guys' willingness to help us, help the community. It's one of the things that I love so much about Lakewood is that we all get together in times of need, and we all help each other out, so I really thank you. And I also have a certificate of appreciation for you as well. Certificate of appreciation presented to Little Church on the Prairie in recognition of your continued partnership, dedication, and commitment to supporting the community during an emergency which displaced residents during the Hidden Lake Apartment Fire on June twenty-sixth. Thanks again for that opportunity.
Well, thank you, Chief McCurdy. We appreciate the good work, and certainly it's fun to recognize folks in the community who continue to contribute in many ways. Next, we turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Please note, there is a public hearing on the regular agenda, the first item on the regular agenda, and that will be the public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. So if you are here to provide public testimony for that hearing, please reserve your comments for that particular slot in tonight's agenda. Otherwise, this is the time set for public comment on anything else. So public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at six thousand Main Street, Southwestern Lakewood, or at her email, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically, and that is so that we maintain a clear and transparent record. And so I asked the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from John Burns, N. Brennan Dubs, and John and Cindy Gardner.
Thank you, and I personally have seen and reviewed the written comments submitted. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to any matter related to city business, and I like to emphasize that. It's matters pertaining to city business under this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you simply queue up at the microphone, and please state your name and residence for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes to speak. There should be lights on the dais there that help time down your three minutes. Virtual comments are also allowed here in the City of Lakewood. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number at two five three two one five eight seven eight two, enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three twenty-three seven three, and upon entering the meeting, please enter your name so that we can identify you as we turn to virtual commentators at the appropriate time. Please use the raise the hand feature so we can call upon you, and if you are participating by telephone, use the raise the hand feature by pressing star nine on your phone. So first tonight, I will call on those who are appearing via Zoom who have raised their virtual hands to speak, and I will ask our city clerk to assist me with that task. I have some call-in listeners. I don't see any hands raised, per se, but the first person who is listed is a four one five four four six eight one nine seven number. If you'd like to provide public comment, please state your name and residence for the record and proceed.
So, Mayor, I don't see any virtual hands raised at this time, indicating interest in providing public comments.
Very good. I'll give it a second just to make sure, because we've got some people who are just a bit late to the game and wanted to provide comment previously. Okay, so seeing none virtually, I'll now call on those who are here in person. Again, we have a sign-in sheet for the public hearing, so if you're here for that, again, just be patient, and that will be under the regular agenda for public hearings and appeals. The first individual I have on the sign-in sheet for public comment tonight, Sherry Arkell.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, City Council members and staff. My name is Sherry Arkell, and I am a resident of Lakewood. My purpose tonight is to follow up on my August fifth comments to this council concerning the petition to vacate the One Hundredth Street-Stilicon Lake public access. I am speaking as a retired Clover Park School District teacher who spent my forty-year career educating students in this ever-changing community. Those who believe that an overgrown piece of waterfront property is of little value to the citizens in this city need to be educated. When I taught at Dour, my class would take walking field trips to Flat Creek, where students collected water samples, identified animal and plant life, and practiced the scientific method. But most importantly, they learned to be curious in a real-world environment where their senses were engaged. They asked questions that led to more investigation and self-discovery. We were lucky to be able to use the resources within the walking distance of a school. Last Thursday, I parked my car at the Park Lodge parking lot on One Hundredth Street at ten twenty AM and walked to the One Hundredth Street access, a straight shot. It took eight minutes to arrive at the entrance to Site Number Five. A total of nine cars passed me, round trip. A teacher could use that location to plan an entire unit tied to the state's science learning standards. Here is an uncomfortable truth. In the last school year, seventeen out of every twenty students at Park Lodge came from low-income families. These students may never have an opportunity to enjoy any of our public lakes unless this city makes a better effort to provide public access. At the August fifth City Council meeting, we heard some lakefront owners claim and complain that the general public does not know how to care for our lakes. Their solution is to limit public access. The real solution is to educate our youth on how to understand and treat our public lakes. They may not live on a lake, but they are certainly capable of learning the importance of caring for public water. There are laws limiting the vacations of streets abutting bodies of water, and it specifically mentions education. RCW thirty-five point seventy-nine point zero three five, procedures to vacate must one be determined that the street is not suitable for education. Two be, before adopting a resolution vacating a street, a study must be conducted to determine if the street is suitable for the purpose of education. I urge our city council to follow the law, conduct a study of Site Five's educational value to our students and to future generations, and to share the findings with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lori Miller.
My name is Lori Miller, and I reside in Lakewood. I am here to talk about the Lakewood's public lake accesses and how this affects One Hundredth Street Lake-Stilicon public access potential closure. From the initial incorporation of the City of Lakewood, our city council has been given the responsibility to maintain and keep the lake accesses clean and safe for all of the people of Lakewood. Keyword "all." This was intended to be a place where people can enjoy peaceful recreation. As of 2008, under the watch of the city council, the state of these accesses have been steadily declining. The city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on surveys, diagrams, plans, and ratings. Beautiful pictures of parks were drawn up, all with the intent of giving the people safe, clean, and free places to fish, kayak, picnic, and swim. This money, however, was spent with good intent and zero follow-through. The lack of action is a misuse of taxpayers' funds. How is it possible that we are here, where we are today? With accesses that cannot be entered due to overgrown invasive plants, as well as adjacent neighbors commandeering these public accesses as their own yard-waste dump? With encroachments being built by adjacent neighbors or encroachments that are not reflected at the time of purchases? Clearly built on public land without any repercussions, claiming it as their own and denying public access? With no signs or notification to the public that these accesses even exist? With having a city council that finds it easier to sell the land than that belongs to the people and wiping their hands of the responsibility for messes caused by previous council members instead of standing up and doing what's right? We need to correct the mistakes of the past and turn these public accesses into what they are intended, public accesses. So who's responsible for cleaning up these neglected accesses? Service clubs like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Kiwanis Clubs, and schools are willing to help with projects like this. Who's in charge of recruiting these volunteer groups? I'm asking the council to do the right thing. Take your responsibility seriously. Instead of selling these accesses, let's clean them up so the community can use them and be proud of them. These accesses are for the people you represent, the entire population of Lakewood. Thank you.
Next. John Burns, next.
John Burns, Lakewood resident. I'd like to, I appreciate seeing a number of hands from council people who have visited Site Five in the past. Give you one. How many hands? One, two, three, four? How many have visited the site since the Fourth of August? One, two, three, four? Okay, thank you. I think that's important for a number of reasons, because, you know, hands-on first experience means a lot more than reading a report. But many of the decisions that are made up to this time have been driven by reports and not actual viewing of the property, I think. But let's take a look at that. I've visited all the street lake ends myself personally, and I've read and analyzed reports, old and new, that have been available through the city, and I've taken a careful look at all photos that I could get my hands on over time, different time periods. And the latest report on Site Five, I'm just going to say, and I've said this before, but nobody's asked me specifics, is that there are errors there and errors of significance, okay? Errors that have slipped through the councils before, and they're misrepresentations of fact, and those really need to be looked at, because if those have been the basis for city policy on what to sell and what to vacate for years, which they have, the 2008 reports on the 2009 report, which, whose results ended up in the latest study as recommendations. So, you know, in addition to this scoring matrix on the latest report, I'd just like to say that it listed no ADA parking or access. Well, that site is capable of ADA parking and ADA access. It is a huge site, and things can be moved around a slight amount on it and make room for parking and access. So by scoring this potential treasure as having zero ADA access and zero ADA parking, it does a disservice to the public, in my opinion. If you would add two more points for those, that site on the latest report would tie with the other possibility, the favorite possibility, on the lake at an eight. So anyway, the 2008 study has just acted like a virus that appears to have affected the thinking in the past of the council members. There's been errors in scoring, errors in not addressing site potential, just existing conditions. When all you look at is existing conditions, and yet your reports do not reflect what is actually the capacity, then you have a problem. And the bottom line is that we've got a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Abraham, Mr. Abraham Murgolini.
Hello. Good evening to every one of you. Thank you very much for coming and hearing, but I have to say, I'm going to talk about that the One Hundredth Street Access. Well, I want to ask this council that how many of you have been a guest of these two individuals who are requesting a vacation here? Would you please raise your hand? In the past year?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to know how many of you have been the guests of these two individuals who own those properties that they want vacation of their own? If any of you have been their guest in the past year?
We're just receiving public comments, sir.
I understand, but you raised your hand, Mr. Mayor, for the last speaker. Can you please do the same for me?
I think we're listening to your public comments.
Okay, well, this continued the public hearing. For what? I am just asking the very same question. You condemn my home. I want to know where my shoreline is going and to who. I deserve to know. You cannot vacate any shoreline without finding one to replace it. You cannot use the city's already public access and donate it to somebody else. The law doesn't let you do that. That's why I have been saying that we have been targeted, and that's why I have been saying that you are really not qualified to be doing what you are doing, unfortunately. I don't like to say that. You don't want to even answer my question, but you are supposedly representing me, working for me, everybody else? You should, I am not saying that you don't vacate that area. You should be considerate that what is the historical background of the Lakewood? And you know, these houses, they were built when there was no really city planning, none of, or any county planning, nothing of such, and they build that. But now it is there. Don't punish the people who bought the property and they didn't know. Accommodate them, but treat them fairly, not to give to one and take from another one, which you have been doing. When I say that, that's the property at nine zero one two, Chrissy? You guys knew that the structure was sitting in the middle of the roadway, like these two houses. You didn't care. That's the neighbor of the park, too. You actually issued a permit to build a second building and renovate this one. And this is why I say we are targeted. Well, you have been saying that, oh, you cannot give us a shoreline which we already own. You wanted to sell it to us, and you say, oh, we can't do it. And now you want to take it away and give it to somebody else.
Next, Christina Manetti. Next, Christina Manetti.
The Manetti Lakewood. Today's Tacoma News Tribune reprinted a New York Times story that can inform your deliberations about whether to allow a piece of city lakefront to become private property at the request of Court Commissioner Clint P. Johnson. The story was about a small piece of city-owned land in Manhattan, but which has been used by the people as a garden for decades. Now the city wants to turn it into affordable housing. The children who attend the school just a 10 minutes walk away, who grow flowers and plants there, play and have lunch, have Easter egg hunts, and who have no other green space in which to experience nature are devastated. Here in Lakewood, many of us take nature for granted, especially those of us who are fortunate enough to have houses with gardens or even lakefront property. Generations of kids used to leave that 100th Street Road End for access to the water, according to a neighbor who used to go in or tubing there many, many decades ago. And today, some kids just up the street at Park Lodge Elementary School, who could, who would probably love to have the chance to go on small outings to Lake Silicon, according to Google Maps, just a nine-minute walk. They could learn about our earth there. They could learn something in the fresh air. I doubt whether any Park Lodge students have ever gone there. It's been overgrown with thorny blackberries, as if intentionally making it as inhospitable as possible. In 2009, the city determined that the road end at 100th Street and Holly Head should be vacated and sold. See the 2009 study. Clearly not in the public's interest. Strangely, these were the only ones deemed unsuitable as for lake access. One wonders why. Some of the most underprivileged kids in the state attend Park Lodge, with 91% of the kids receiving a free or reduced lunch. Park Lodge is also one of the lowest ranking in terms of academic success. Post-pandemic, Park Lodge ranks 1,143rd out of 1,169 elementary schools in Washington State. More, that's like almost the bottom, right? Can you, can you calculate that? Moreover, 88% of the pupils are racist other than white. The city and school district should have joined forces to make the most of what resources the city has at its disposal to enrich these children's educational experience. An obvious one is that lakefront road end just nine minutes from their school. If the council decides to approach a sale of this Lakewood, Lakefront Road End on 100 to private individuals who already have plenty of property, you will be depriving people in the neighborhood who are not as well off from having a chance to enjoy the lake, too. Like those underprivileged, largely minority kids just up the street at Park Lodge Elementary.
Next is James Dunlop.
James Dunlop, Lakewood. I'm commenting on the proposed vacation of the 100th Street Road End. Looking at the Edgewater Park expansion, residents complained about garbage, drug use, and criminal behavior. The city discounted these complaints in the name of equity and public access. Supporters of the 100th Street vacation made similar complaints. It appears, if the vacation goes through, that some Lakewood residents are being treated differently than others. Further, the city council claimed that Dr. Mergelili was encroaching on city property, a claim being contested in the courts. By contrast, at 100th Street, a whole carport and part of a house has been built on city property. This also is an encroachment, but the city seems okay with it. The optics are made worse by the fact that one of 100th Street petitioners is Clinton P. Johnson. Clinton P. Johnson is a Pierce County Court Commissioner. Further, Jason Whalen was sworn in as city councillor on January 3, 2022, by Clinton P. Johnson. Would the city have eminent domain for Mergelili property if it had been owned, for example, by a Pierce County Court Commissioner? The council cannot approve the vacation. It would suggest that equity and public access are important in one place, but not in another. It would go against a principle that all Lakewood residents should be seen to be treated equally, regardless of race, wealth, or social status. The city council, and perhaps the petitioners, need to understand the optics and politics of the situation. In particular, public and judicial office carries a special responsibility to maintain public trust, and this may include an element of personal sacrifice. So, the council should not even be deciding the matter, not least because I believe that they are unable to appear impartial to many Lakewood residents and voters. And this is demonstrated by the reaction of residents I talked to when I described the 100th Street situation. They assumed that this kind of decision is influenced by private connections. City councillors will then agree that their decisions should not just be fair, but they should also be seen to be fair. So, like Caesar's wife, they should act in a way that places themselves above suspicion.
That is all I have on the sign-in sheet, but that should not deter you. If you're interested in providing public comment tonight, if you are and you haven't signed in, please feel free. Cue up at the mic, state your name and residence for the record, and you'll have your three minutes to speak. So, anyone else interested in providing public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sue. I'm not a resident of Lakewood, but it, my, the reason that brought me here is something that did happen within the city limits. Deputy Mayor, you may remember me from a couple of months ago when I spoke of the issues that came stemmed from Silicon, the town of Silicon with the police.
Might be on the microphone, ma'am, so we can hear you.
With, with the town of Silicon with the illegal activity that was involved with your prosecutor. I don't know if you remember or not. You asked for the officer's name, and I gave it to you, Ashworth. I've had some time to think after speaking with Heidi Hatcher. I guess she's your city attorney. She did, prior to me coming in, she did look at the case that was thrown out by the prosecutor, which shouldn't have been. And she said she saw how the cop took my report and turned it into his own words, left mine out, and, and put your prosecutor in the middle of that. She's admitted that. But then she also made, said that she supported the reasoning for kicking, for not accepting it because even though they didn't have all the information, I had to do a lot. I had to email them stuff. They even requested for Chief to, Chief Yabe to send the paperwork that he held from prosecutor purposely. They never did it. I had to do it. I have the emails to prove it. I don't believe that because that investigation was done illegally that it should have ever been, a decision been made on it. Especially if they, at one point, saw it and said, yeah, we see how the cop lied. He didn't do this. He didn't do that. He tampered with evidence, but we don't care. We're still gonna make a decision. When I was assaulted by a chiropractor where I can't go to work now. I was already injured worker through LNI, and this chiropractor assaulted, literally was ripping at my back. When I was able to get away, I went straight to the ER. I went straight to the police station, and that's how they did me. And since you guys are contracted with the town of Silicon, I'm almost expecting the city to do something because that, admitting that it was wrong and then still making a decision, I don't believe that your prosecuting attorney's office was following the rules. There are higher entities that I will go to if I have to. I'm trying to settle it and be treated fairly, the rules be followed in the state, in the city of Lakewood, but I'm not gonna stop. He's not gonna get away with assaulting me where I can't go to work now. Every last one of you I see is able to do your job. And I believe that if it happened to somebody in here, you'd do something about it. You wouldn't let them do what they did to me, your prosecuting attorney's office. Heidi Hatcher has been out of control. I called other people within your legal department. Two of them said she had already called them. I said, what is she talking to you for? I was calling to see if I could get assistance. Well, she was giving them a heads up. Why she needed to give a heads up, I don't know, but that's what made me think, you know, they really didn't do me right, and maybe that's what her concern is. One of, the, the last person I spoke with in the legal department, she literally called her while I was on the phone with her. She said, hold on, I have a call. She said, oh, this is Heidi now. I said, what's she calling you for? She said, sounds like she's calling about you. And I'm thinking, you were a little late, Heidi. I got ahold of her first, but I still didn't get any help. She agreed with Heidi.
Thank you.
That's where I was left at. So, I'm really expecting the council to do something because this is horrific and, and it will be investigated. I'm not gonna stop. I'm not gonna let them do this to me. I'm trying to give you all a chance.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council during the public comment period? Anyone else like to address council during the public comment period outside of the public hearing that will be on the regular agenda in just a few minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 5, 2024. B, motion number 2024-53, authorizing the execution of a funding agreement with Central Puget Sound Transit Authority in the amount of $31,625,000 for designing and constructing the Lakewood Station Access Improvement Project. C, motion number 2024-54, authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement with the Clover Park School District for the purchase of fuel. And D, motion number 2024-55, approving the 2025 to 2026 city council goals and priorities.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? I need a second. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, second of my council member, Branstad, that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review.
Thank you. And prior to receiving public testimony on this matter, I'll call on our Planning Division Manager Tiffany Spear for a brief overview. And brief is an oxymoron, given the volume of documents involved in the comprehensive plan review, Ms. Spear.
But, Mr. Mayor, I will do my best for you this, this evening. Tiffany Spear, Planning Division Manager for Planning and Public Works. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing. It is the first of two that are currently scheduled for the city council to hear from the public on the 2024 periodic review, which includes a comprehensive rewrite of our comprehensive plan, as well as significant changes in zoning regarding housing, and then also some other development regulation amendments related to shoreline regulation, and then just various and sundry reflecting state law changes over the last few years. The schedule that's happened so far, this is just the summer 2020, excuse me, summer 2024 schedule. There's actually been over 25 meetings at the Planning Commission and over 15 before these were held here at the city council level, but now we've had two study sessions in the last month or so. The first related to the plans and policies. The second was related to development regulations. Tonight is the hearing, and then on the right side of the slide, you'll see the remaining schedule for action unless the council decides it needs more time. So, a week from tonight, there's another study session, then there'll be a second public hearing on the 3rd, which is a Tuesday of September. Then there'll be one more study session, and at this point, on the 16th of September is when council is scheduled to take action. As I just mentioned, there's a number of things included in the package. This is much more than the annual cycle that there actually was just a call for applications for, for next year. It is, again, front to back, the comprehensive plan, and then also looking at all of the various development regulations that affect all types of development, not just residential, but all types within the city borders. In terms of process, we've worked our way roughly halfway through at least this graphic, but we're actually closer to the finish line. The public hearings have already occurred at the Planning Commission. There were three there. And then, as I said, this is the first of two here at the city council. There will also be, within the next 60 days or so, outreach to Puget Sound Regional Council and the Department of Commerce, once a final draft is completed by council for those two entities to review. There was already preliminary review by both organizations, as well as Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Natural Resources, and ICLI, which is the National Local Government Climate Change Association. The recommended effective dates for most of what you have as part of this package would be January 1 of '25. That is to allow the city the needed time to update permitting forms, permitting processes. So come January 1, things are ready to go. But there is a separate ordinance that is proposed before you, related specifically to the size and allowed locations of master plan developments in the downtown. That is suggested for the regular 30-day effective date. Again, I mentioned there's been public engagement already. In addition to the Planning Commission and council levels, there's been two websites that have been live for almost two years. There's been numerous postings on social media. There's been electronic newsletters sent out to voluntary subscribers. There's been city magazine articles. There's been direct mailers for all of the open houses that have been held throughout the last year. Several different steering committees or advisory boards were formed to help the city gain well-rounded public input as these documents were drafted. And again, there's been a number of meetings at commission and council. So for tonight, there are a number of attachments to the materials for this evening for the council. First is Attachment A, which includes the comprehensive plan, which again is totally reorganized. There is a new Silicon Woodbrook Subarea Plan, and then there are amendments to downtown and station district subarea. Attachment B actually takes the comprehensive plan and breaks it down a little further in terms of what is current language, whether it's been changed, and if so, what the new language is. Attachment C is the similar summary of all of the regulations through Titles 14, 17, 18, A, B, and C. And then there's also a new Title 16 proposed, which is the incorporation of our shoreline master program into the municipal code. Attachment D is similar to B. D is the audit table for development regulations. There is a technical memorandum that was provided to the city by Facet Northwest regarding the proposed repair and buffer widths in our shoreline master program, regulations being moved over to the critical area ordinance in Title 14. That was discussed at the last week's study session. And then there's also, again, that idea of allowing master plan developments in various parts of the downtown, as well as reducing the minimum size. So, the summary of the comprehensive plan itself, currently there are 11 chapters. And as proposed, there will now be 15, and there will also be technical and substantive appendices to the comp plan itself. But this is more reflective of how the Growth Management Act itself is organized for ease of reference and also ease of finding topics based on what people would tend to name a chapter or understand where they need to go to look for things. The Silicon Woodbrook Subarea Plan, as the name indicates, this is an update to the 2011 Silicon Plan, and it incorporates Woodbrook across I-5 in a very intentional way to try to make sure people across I-5, as well as those in Silicon, feel like they've got a stronger connection to the city as a whole. Downtown, really the only change, other than that master plan community item I mentioned, is the rezoning of several parcels last year requires the southern boundary of the subarea to now be amended slightly. And then in the subarea for station district, this is about removing reference to the Lakewood Landing Project, since that's no longer moving forward as envisioned at the time of that subarea plan's adoption. And it's also having the change in the frequency of review so it matches the downtown subarea plan going forward. The package summary, I am, again, going very quickly, but just a reminder, we've talked about this before. There is now not only a total housing growth and job growth number that the city needs to plan for, but in terms of housing, there are specific amounts of units at various income levels that are required by the city to plan for over the next 20 years. Those are indicated on the top table. The bottom table shows the total number of both housing and job units that the city plans for between now and 2044. And then it breaks down from left to right, the shares that are within the downtown subarea, the station district, and then the rest of the city. The draft zoning map, as you see here, many of the colors other than yellow are staying pretty much exactly the same. The changes are in our residential areas, and what we have here are several shades of yellow indicating different densities or zones within residential zoning. The darker ones that have dots, particularly in the area just north of the downtown and east of the downtown, that is where there is higher densities allowed because that is where transit is either currently in place or planned. What does that mean? What is this densification of housing I've been mentioning? It's middle housing, which is everything from duplexes to courtyard apartments, and then also accessory dwelling units. The big change per state law now is that residential development happens in single-family areas in all of these different housing types. So there is no longer going to be strictly single-family zones or areas. There will be the ability for property owners, should they choose to do it, to add additional units to their lots. There's also the ability, depending on the lot size, to divide it in order to have fee simple ownership of multiple units on a single-family lot. The other big change is regarding critical areas and shoreline regulation. There now is going to be, as I mentioned, a new shoreline master program, Title 16, in the comprehensive plan. And then there's a Title 14, which is where our critical areas are regulated. And as this sheet indicates here in front of everyone right now, there are certain water bodies that are, that were under shoreline. bodies that are, that were under shoreline master program, and they will continue to be so, including American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Lake Louise, Silicon Lake, Wahop Lake, Chambers, and Clover Creek, and then the shorelands within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark for all of those water bodies. So most of the area that was already regulated under shoreline master program will continue to be so. However, in the purple circle there on the right, you'll see a number of smaller lakes and creeks, or tributaries, are now going to be regulated under the critical areas ordinance based on best available science. What does that mean? There are some changes in buffer widths, and this was discussed through a public mailer, through a public open house, and a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, as well as at your study session last week. But you'll see here, there are changes to, in particular, what are right now, unless she just coded red, gold, or pink. The blue is where all of those larger water bodies are, and again, there's no change there. But here, what you would see is, instead of 65 feet, for instance, for the gold, the non-fish-bearing waters, it's jumping to 100 feet. For the no designation, meaning it's not known if there's fish in that water body or not, they will also be at 100 feet. What's happening with type F or fish-bearing water bodies is there has been recommendation by the Department of Fish and Wildlife and Natural Resources to have a 200-foot width buffer on those types of water bodies. The City of Lakewood, with their technical memorandum to support and explain why, is recommending 150 rather than 200. There isn't a way to go lower than that without violating what is considered best available science, which would be in violation of the Growth Management Act. One more topic that's been a subject at the council over the last year is short-term rentals. First of all, whether or not to allow them in accessory dwelling units. The recommendation, both in '23 and '24, from the Planning Commission, was that short-term rentals be allowed in ADUs throughout the city. So that is included in your package this evening. There have been updated short-term rental definitions and regulations per changes to state law. And then also, there is a new set of regulations proposed, which are based on the City of Gig Harbor's model, that creates a permit type for short-term rental reviews. It has operating conditions for short-term rentals. As of now, there is the allowance of one short-term rental permit per operator. That is something that the council discussed last week. But as of now, the the package does still include that language, and then establish of performance standards for short-term rentals as well. There are a number of other changes that I won't spend time on tonight, just because they're various and sundry and lengthy. But all of these different titles of the regulatory materials in the municipal code are being amended, and again, they are included in tonight's packet. So with that, I will step away for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step away, are there any elucidating questions by council? Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. I just have two questions. When we last gathered together and talked about this novel, that the question came up about what are really the viable transportation plans that are still in effect, in that we were using plans that were generated some time ago, and you indicated that there is going to be an effort by staff to meet with transit authorities, Pierce Transit, and maybe others, to try to see how plans have been updated, or if elements of them are no longer envisioned in any specific timeframe. Have we had a chance to hold those meetings yet?
On Friday, Public Works Director Jim Remac, or Jeff Remac, excuse me, and myself, met with Pierce Transit and their consultant that's working on their long-range 2045 transportation plan. And when we were having that conversation, we asked that question. The current plan identifies what are called Routes 2 and 3 as the next ones that Pierce Transit would focus its effort and funding on to build. Route 3 is what essentially is reflected in our package right now, where the higher-density housing would be allowed, because if it were constructed as planned right now, that's where it would be in the city. There is no change at this point, from their perspective, that it will go away. It's just a matter of when. But as they do this update to the 2045 long-term plan for them, I can't remember the name exactly, they will be updating whether 2 or 3 happens first, and maybe be able to get some more detail as to when 3 would be built.
So for the purposes of our planning, in this 2024 window, is 2045 outside the 20-year window that we need to consider for planning?
2045, that year, is a year beyond the 2044 20-year horizon for what we're doing tonight. However, in the current long-range plan for Pierce Transit, Route 3 was identified at one point as being constructed by 2030. And so whether it changes more or not, there's kind of a 14-year window, if you will, within our 20-year planning horizon where it could happen.
Okay. And then my second question had to do with, in your discussion about the effective dates of the things that we might be approving, and looking at it for being January 1, 2025, to allow for all the changes to be codified in forms and procedures and things to be done. And that makes a lot of sense. But what is the criticality of the one item that we're going to expedite and make effective in October? Is there something that it needs, or that the city would like to have happen, that needs that change to happen earlier and not in consort with all the rest of the changes that this will do?
The reason that is on its own is it is a reflection of the 2024 biennial review of the downtown subarea and the economic activity that's happened since adoption, and the fact that our department head has been meeting with several developers who have expressed interest in the downtown. But because that option wasn't available to them, they were holding off. So given the economic development priority of the council, the high priority of developing downtown, the suggestion was, this can happen separately from the rest of the package, and it could go under the usual effective date schedule that the council has.
So this is at the request of some potential developer?
The amendment is not itself a request. It is something that was suggested by our department director as a result of the conversations he's had. If you wanted to postpone it to January 1, you certainly could. It's just, it's not required to wait that long. It wouldn't require the type of prep that the other parts of the regulatory changes will.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Spear. Oh, Councilmember Pearson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I think I've touched on this before, but can you clarify the general consensus of the way we're going with these changes? Is it, is it that we are, the recommendations and the code revisions are meeting the minimum state requirements to be in compliance with the, you know, regulations? Or are we, are these, as they're presented in our packets, are they going above and beyond in some areas? Or is it, and can you clarify which ones, I guess, if we're, you know, recommending more strict requirements, or if we're kind of just complying with the state law minimums?
I will give you a very high-level and incomplete answer this evening, and I can provide you a more detailed one at the next study session. Essentially, because of the city's concern about loss of local control and autonomy, which has traditionally been under the Growth Management Act, with the new changes under state law recently saying you will do this for housing, for instance, the city has been pretty clear in all its communications with ecology, with commerce, with the other departments, we are doing what we need to do to comply with state law, and then we're trying to keep as much local control and everything else that we can. And so the package in front of you tonight does its best to do that. However, there are a couple of places where there are things going beyond what is the absolute minimum. And again, I would like to request an opportunity to, you know, codify that if I could in a memo and provide that next week.
Thank you. I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate, you know, any areas where we're going above and beyond to, you know, highlight those that, that these are more than the minimum necessary.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, Ms. Spear? As her overview indicated, this is a significant body of work. It is a periodic review, but it's been a very thorough review to date. And now, this is the opportunity for the public to provide testimony during this public hearing on the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review. As indicated previously, public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the council electronically. And for purposes of transparency and creating a record, the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony on this issue in advance.
Mayor, we received testimony from Julie Watson, Ecosystem Coordination Board, and Christina Manetti, Gary Oak Coalition.
Thank you. As indicated in my previous commentary on public comment in general, testimony here is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. If you'd like to provide virtual testimony, you certainly can. Please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and upon entering the meeting, raise your hand, enter your name so we can identify you, and then you will be called upon to speak. Similarly, as with all public comment, we ask that for record purposes, you state your name and residence of record, and you'll have your three minutes for testimony. So tonight, again, I will call on those who are appearing by Zoom first, followed by those who have signed in to testify during this public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, at this time, there are no virtual hands raised.
Okay, giving it just a second or two to see if anyone is a late arrival. Seeing none, I will turn to those who have signed in to testify. The first is Mr. Kevin Green.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Green. I'm a resident of Tacoma, Washington. Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm the district manager for LRI. LRI is a part of the May family of companies. We provide garbage recycling and yard waste pickup and disposal services to Lakewood's home businesses. And we're very proud to provide more than 500 jobs in Pierce County. LRI and Willmay Companies applaud your work on the comprehensive plan and its future land use map. It's a tough project, and you're giving it the time and focus that it needs. One of the key purposes of the plan and its future land use map is to make sure the Lakewood homes and businesses will continue to have good access to the services they need. And as you might occasionally notice, when you take out your trash or visit the transfer station, garbage recycling and yard waste pickups are a very important service. To make sure that there will continue to be efficient and effective waste service in support of the city's growth, we've sent you and the staff a letter requesting one minor change to one of the boundaries within the future land use map, and a matching change to the related zoning boundary. This request relates to a property that we are holding ready for future service expansions the city might need. This land is in a generally industrial area on Sales Road, east of I-5. Our letter has more detail, but in summary, the city previously studied, analyzed, and designated the eastern part of this land for industrial land uses and zoned it industrial one. However, as part of the cleanup of the zoning map in 2019, this land was removed from industrial zoning. We ask that you amend the draft, future land use map, and the zoning map to reinstate this area's industrial status. This amendment would help us maintain capacity and serve the city as it grows. We think the 2019 downzone was an honest error, because the city probably did not mean to reduce its future capacity to handle waste. We don't know of any policy or reason for the 2019 change, and we're more than happy to answer any questions you might have, and we thank you for all your work on the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next on the sheet that's signed in is Mr. Murchellini, or Dr. Murchellini. Again, please limit the comments and be specific to this public hearing topic.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Abraham Murchellini. I'm a resident of Lakewood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me first start with this question for you. Is this city going to be following the wheel of Ms. Patty Belly for diversion while doing this expansion? Is it, what I'm trying to say, is it going to be picking and choosing and condemning people's property under eminent domain by abusing the law while doing all of this, you know, master plan and, and, you know, developments? My concern is that, you know, it should be something that there would be equity there, and there should be inclusion, but not just to preach it.
Well, again, focus on the
I am. I am. I am, indeed. And speaking of that, we, I don't know why there should be all the access be diverted to Edgewater Drive. Well, they were talking that there is no record of any crime or anything.
Mr. Murchellini, again.
Yes. I am sorry. Well, you know, this is a part of this development.
No.
You may not like it. You may not like it, but it is. I'm going to use that, and I'm going to say that we had to make nearly 7911 call in that area. Those are recorded, and it's with the city. These people, they are suffering in that area. We are not there anymore because of what you have done, which we consider as a crime. But, you know, you should really be friendly to the people you serve, then pick and choose and serve who you want and who you don't like him. Just go after him. And a couple word to you, the Honorable Deputy Mayor, and Ms. Patty Belly. There is a word that they use as token. My apology to both of you for using it. You are sitting here. You don't want to be a token.
Please just focus on the comprehensive plan public review, sir. Otherwise, we'll have to kind of cut your comments short.
Everybody. Do you really think by taking our home, you really deliver on what you stated, equity and inclusion?
Your comments are done. Thank you, sir. Next, Christina Manetti.
Christina Manetti, Lakewood. I was pleased to see that the amendments to the critical areas ordinance include the phrases "net loss" and "ecological functions," as well as "best available science." This is clearly an improvement over the old version of the ordinance. The city, however, needs to do more to ensure that these will not be merely words on a page. There are, however, troubling signs that these terms will be just words on a page. How can these words help effect real change in Lakewood's protection of the environment if they are not defined in the code? What exactly is a net loss, and what are ecological functions? For example, the city doesn't even have any inventory of Gary Oaks, so how does it know what it's losing? And what are, what methods and criteria are used to determine what ecological functions are, much less their loss? Moreover, when an applicant reports to the city confidently that his or her plan will result in no net loss, what evidence will he or she be required to present to prove this? Or will the city just take an applicant's word for it? From the agenda packet, it appears that the city has included wording "net loss" and "ecological functions" to fulfill a state requirement specifically related to no net loss in the context of wetlands and riparian areas. The city should instead adopt code that stipulates that there be no net loss of critical areas more broadly defined, not just meet some outside requirement. The Growth Management Act requires that there be no net loss of critical areas. In the draft, the city mentions only that there should be no net loss as a result of a reasonable use exception, page 490, and in the context of water bodies. I urge the city not to adopt language in the code that mandates a no net loss approach to, not only to adopt language in the code that mandates a no net loss approach to all critical areas as required by the Growth Management Act, but to take it one step further, as the 2024 WDFW Gary Oak Recommendations urge and other specialists in the field, and require instead a net gain of ecological functions. Best available science is only valuable if recommendations are followed. Instead of the mantra heard over and over, it appeals that recommendations are only recommendations and not a mandate. In the end, then, they are not followed, resulting, for example, in the destruction of scores of ecologically of scores of ecologically irreplaceable Gary Oaks and their habitat and the critical area in violation of the Growth Management Act. Thank you for your attention to these matters, so important to our environment here in Lakewood.
Thank you. That, there is a John and Cindy Gardner, but they didn't indicate yes or no as to whether they wish to speak. If you're here, you're certainly welcome to. That is the last individual signed up to provide testimony during this public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, but if you haven't signed up, you're welcome to approach.
Hello. Yeah, my name is James Dunlop. I'm a Lakewood resident. I haven't sort of really prepared anything specifically. I sort of, I'm going to talk in sort of general terms. First point, picking up on what Christina Manetti has said about there being no real inventory of Gary Oaks in Lakewood. We don't really know what the state of Lakewood, of Lakewood's Gary Oaks are over time, and I think matters haven't been helped by the fact that for a long time, you did not need a permit for, to cut down a Gary Oak. I think, what was it, over on a area which was, I think, was it less than 17,000 feet? So that meant that if you, if you did a public record request for every single permit, for every permit of trees cut down over whatever, 10, 10 or 15 years, you only saw the permits for where it was required. You didn't get any information about trees cut down on small lots. So I think that that is a problem, and I think the city does need to find out some way of getting some idea about what is happening to Gary Oaks in the city. I mean, a Gary Oak is a city tree, and I think it just somehow, it's difficult. Photographic evidence is difficult. There may be mathematical modeling that can be used. So that is one thing that I think should be addressed. A second point is about, you know, when, when people, when developers do surveys of their property and they have environmental assessments, I think there is a big problem that they use their own assessors. And obviously, if you've been hired by a developer to make an assessment of, of a property, you're, you're going to want to have a good track record in giving a developer what they want. And I think it would be useful if there was some scope for some independent assessment because, you know, I think if you, you've definitely got a, got a problem there of sort of vested interest. Finally, there's a question of ivy. So there are lots of trees in Lakewood which, oak trees and, and other trees which are being destroyed by ivy. And I'm sure you've all seen oak trees. Ivy will destroy them. It will cut them off from light, from nutrition. And I'm just wondering if there's some way of dealing with this. I mean, I suppose one could, one could make it sort of compulsory for owners to deal with their ivy. I understand that might be a problem, but given that the city has tried to restrict, has, has put regulation on renters and on rental properties, I'm wondering, at least in terms of rentals with oak trees and other trees, you, could you have some perhaps requirement for those signed up to be rent, signed up to rent their properties, that they could have some scope for you insisting that they look after ivy on their trees? Because when you've got a renter, they're not going to take responsibility for their trees and the ivy on the trees, and the property owner may be nowhere to be seen. They may not be even in the state. So I'm, I just think if you could think of some way of dealing with the ivy, I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Again, that's the last individual who's signed up or who has approached the voting to provide testimony, but if there's anyone else out here who would like to provide testimony during the public hearing, now's the time. Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll declare the, or the public hearing closed. We'll now turn to ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 810 vacating a portion of 100th Street Southwest, lying west of Decovan Drive and east of Stillicum Lake.
And I believe we'll call on Ms. Silva for a brief overview, and then we may have a motion to postpone. Ms. Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Today before you is ordinance number 1810, as the Madam Clerk mentioned, vacating a portion of Hunter Street Southwest, lying, lying west of Decovan Drive and east of Stillicum Lake. The department respectfully requests recommending postponing consideration until your September 16th meeting or thereafter, until such time an appraisal can be submitted in accordance with state law as well as our local municipal code. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor or council members.
Certainly, I'll see if members of council have any questions on that specific request or status update you've provided as opposed to the entirety of the proposed ordinance. Any questions? Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the request to delay the recommendation, to delay acting on, on, on the request of the property owners to vacate this street is based on needing an assessment of
An appraisal.
value of the area as being requested to be vacated. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct, for the entire property being requested to be vacated, sir.
So how did we get ahead of ourselves in terms of looking at a request and deciding it was complete and then starting down the road with hearings and getting it agendized? Is that, is, is that, is that a, a, a learning curve exercise for us in terms of how we, we dealt it since we've, it's been more than 10 years since we had a vacation of a street and being considered?
Great question, sir. Our code does not delineate or identify certain specific procedures, only the requirements for the process and criteria for consideration. So while our local code identifies an appraisal, the contents of that appraisal, as well as the certification required for the appraisal content, it does not require the minimum application submittal requirements related to that. So a future legislative action to change that code and be explicit, that could be a potential future item at a later date.
Great.
Thank you.
But, but, but it, but it, but it's your face that, that we, without the updated assessment, it wouldn't be proper to move forward.
That is correct. According to state law as well as our own local code, we need to have that appraisal before taking final action on the proposal.
Thank you.
Yes, is there a motion to postpone consideration of ordinance number 810 as recommended by staff?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to postpone the ordinance number 810 to September 16th.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we postpone consideration of ordinance 810 to Monday, September 16, 2024. Is there any further discussion? I would only comment that RCW 3579.035-sub3 indicates that no vacation shall be effective until the fair market value has been paid for the street or value that is vacated. So doesn't necessarily require upfront, but certainly it's a requirement before the process is effective. That's my reading of state law. So in the absence of any further comments, Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hadn't read the item that you had just quoted, but is the interpretation of that, that if we were to act on this ordinance and the action was to approve a vacation, that the, the, the lack of a, of a, of an appraisal would affect the effective date of it, but that it doesn't preclude our approving it subject to such an appraisal?
I would defer to, since I'm, I'm not legal counsel for this city, I defer to the city attorney, but that would be my understanding. But we do have a motion on the table. It's been seconded, and I think we turn our attention to the motion at hand. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. It will be tabled until the council meeting of Monday, September 16, 2024, in anticipation, I assume, from your comments, Ms. Silva, of the receipt of an appraisal for fair market value of the subject property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, Mr. Coffield, any unfinished or new business for consideration?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Very good. I'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon our city attorney to give you an update as a follow-up to a council request regarding some meeting schedule options for you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. And to put it as succinctly as I possibly can, when and how long and how you agendize your city council meetings is within the province of the city council, which means you can hold city council meetings every Monday, every other Monday with study sessions in between. It's pretty much whatever you want to do. If you look at page 1031 of your packet, I did a little bit of a survey of the cities in Pierce County and a survey of cities of our size. Cities in Pierce County, we are one of four that holds meetings as frequently as we do. And among cities our size, the only other city our size holding meetings as frequently as we do is the city of Lacey. That being said, you could also be like the city of Tacoma, who holds study sessions in the middle of the day on their meeting day and then holds the meeting that evening every Tuesday. So it's really up to the council. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Ms. Walker. Let me open it up for questions for you, my members of council, and then maybe we'll chat with Mr. Coffield a little bit. Any questions from Ms. Walker on materials presented? So looking at the smaller cities on page 1031 of the packet, it looks like some of them are a little bit smaller than Lakewood, or I should say most. Those are the folks that have a shortened meeting scheduled, it appears.
Perhaps, Mr. Mayor, but I think what was interesting to me is there wasn't necessarily a direct correlation between size of city and frequency of meeting. One that was very interesting to me is the city of Puyallup appears to be as calendared. They have a typical meeting date, but they also just sort of specifically calendar some. The legal requirement is that for regular meetings, or our type of city, optional code city, you are supposed to have a regular meeting date that the citizens know that that's when you meet. It's not required to be at any particular time, but, you know, it's all over the board. I put the populations there just so that you would see. And the second grouping of cities, as you can see, Lakewood's right in the middle of those populations.
And, and just maybe to help flesh out some discussion on this, so the recommendation, at least on the table for consideration, is to change the regular meetings to the first and third Monday at 6:00, and then followed by a study session. I guess my thought, perhaps you and the executive leadership team have chatted a little bit about workloads. You know, historically, it seems like if we have a regular meeting, sometimes, depending on public comment, it can go one hours, two hours, sometimes three or more, and then have it followed by a study session might be death by meeting a little bit into the evening. So any thoughts on internal discussions on workload?
Oh, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty, having been here for over 20 years as your city attorney, and I'm not sure that it's so much workload as it is looking at what the council is required to do in a city council meeting. You are required to do any legislative act in an open public meeting. Some of the other things you do, you are nice to do. Tonight, we had the police department get awards, and that's important stuff to be doing, but you may want to look at your agendas to determine, you know, if you're going to talk about the Comprehensive Plan, you might want to clear the decks for a study session to talk about that. You know, I think we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that you get everything that you want to see, but if it's everything that you want to see, it's a lot, and it's hard to do that in less than the time we're allotting. That is my own opinion, and I do not speak on behalf of anyone else, and I may pay the price on Tuesday morning. I'm just letting you know.
Sure, it's fine. No, I thank you for that because that would, it would back up the meetings, you know, it would give a little bit more time. And I think historically, again, you know, Alice Bush isn't here, but historically, probably we started at the seven o'clock timeframe to give council members and the public a chance to get dinner and to get to a meeting at seven, probably. I don't know, but this would back it up by an hour, which we'll throw it out for consideration. I'm okay with. I think reducing the number of meetings from four to three is not a bad idea. We always have the option to set an additional meaty study session on that fourth Monday or Tuesday or whatever day we want, frankly. So any, any thoughts, my folks, Mr. Bokey? Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah, good analysis because I do appreciate that you brought in the cities that are closer in size with, with us. I like the Mamish one, the, where we have two meetings a month, and then we have a study session on that second Tuesday, which gives us the ability to have a fourth Tuesday, like if we're doing Comprehensive Plan. Not crazy about the six o'clock time, even though I only work in Tacoma. That, that can be a, a, that seems a little early to me. I can live with 6:30, so if we did what Mamish does. Not thrilled with the idea of a study session after a council meeting for the, some of the reasons expressed by the mayor. You know, our meetings are rarely done by nine o'clock, starting a study, study session afterwards, and we do not do a good job of agendizing study sessions. I mean, last week is a really classic example. We brought in one of our committees, they were there for 45 minutes, and then we had something else, and then we decided we were going to talk about the comp plan, which is one of the most important things we do as a city. And so I, very odd, and we were here at almost 11:00. And so I'm not, stacking the meetings doesn't work for me, I don't think. I don't think it's a, that's my personal opinion. So I like the, I can live with the Mamish first and third, for us, it would be Mondays. You're keeping the day. Is that your recommendation?
It's not my day to keep.
Okay. We can have any day we want.
Yeah, then that's 6:30 if you want to go earlier, and that's fine.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree that I think we could go down to three meetings. I prefer having a study session just as a study session so I can focus on what we're talking about and really have thorough discussion. And yes, same reasoning, I would hate to have a full council meeting and then go into a study session and not be as engaged as I would like to be. So that would be my preference, I guess it would, and I would be okay with 6:30. I could do that.
Councilmember Brandstetter.
Well, the easiest thing to be okay with is that starting at 6:30 for meetings instead of seven. Okay, I mean, I, I don't think that's that, that, that half hour particularly, if it gets us being able to go and do that. But, you know, the, but I am against reducing it to one study session a month. Our problem that we have been experiencing with study sessions is that there got too many items on the agenda. We can't even with doing two. And study sessions are our time to actually get into the details and be able to And study sessions are our time to actually get into the details and be able to get things to resolve with staff or have staff identify the things to resolve so that we can come to consensus and move things to consent agendas. And so we need to have our wits about us during study sessions, and we need to have our wits about them for the first three items on them and also for the next three. So I'm okay with, other than starting at six thirty, I'm okay with the current schedule of doing that. Or if we were going to reduce to three meetings a month, I'd keep two study sessions and have one regular meeting that we're going to have actions on. Because it's study sessions that we really do our real work as a council of getting into the details and of resolving in a, in a format that is not constricted by Robert's Rules of Order to getting an understanding around issues. And, you know, we have in the past asked the city manager to manage the agendas of study sessions to not put so many things on them. And yet, going to one a month would necessitate him to do that. Or worse, have us deal with action items that we haven't looked at at a study session. So, unbalanced, just because I think it's, we all have limitations about how long of a meeting we can do before we begin to lose our individual effectiveness. I would rather keep the same session schedule that we have now, other than starting at six thirty, which we'll at some times let us do, but will also accommodate our hopeful increase in public participation.
Good thoughts. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm thinking in order for us to stay on target with the goals that we set for ourselves, we might have to have more discussion on the study sessions because that's where we do most of our work for the council itself. But a six thirty good start, three times a month is good for me, but will we be able to accomplish the goals that we set for, for annual? This would be my only concern.
Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I'd echo Mr. Brandsdeter's comments. I'm fine with the six thirty start. That's not a big deal. The, I do like the idea of two study sessions. I'm okay with the current, the current schedule. I think that it keeps us on track and current with the things that are going on, and there's a linear path, you know, a pattern and whatnot. If we were to combine one of the regular meetings with a study session, maybe there's an opportunity to do like a study session light with some, you know, not maybe super intense items that need to be on there or discussions with some boards or things like that, rather than, you know, hammering out the comp plan after a regular meeting. So if there's a way to do that, I think that I'd be in favor of doing a three-meeting-a-month situation with having one of them be, you know, kind of a shortened study session afterwards. But yeah, that's my thoughts on that.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo what councilmembers Brandsdeter and Pearson said. I don't mind our current schedule. Moving it up to six thirty is not a problem either. I appreciate that. I do also appreciate the possibility of moving to three weeks a month and having, as Councilmember Pearson suggested, maybe if we're packing a study session at the end of a regular session, have it be the small session where we have a limited agenda and pack more stuff into the other study session earlier in the month.
Very good. So, Mr. Brandsdeter.
And I would note that the city manager, under his portion of our regular meeting agendas of reports by the city manager brings staff in and actually proposes and actually presents information that in ways that are in fact many study sessions of topics that can be dealt with less intensely. So I think we already do that within our existing schedule, and the city manager does well for that because it keeps those topics off of regular study sessions, but it keeps us informed in a portion of the meeting that we're, again, not constricted by Robert's rules to try to deal with. So I think that element is already embedded in our processes for each of the meetings under the management of the city manager, who is kind of an advocate for us using our time well and his staff using their time well.
Got it. So let me see if I can recapitulate a little consensus here. So looking at the materials Ms. Walker provided, there were a lot of Tuesday meetings. I don't sense people want to jump to a Tuesday, but that's on the table as well. Any interest in maybe doing two meetings on a Monday, two on a Tuesday, or one on a Tuesday? Mondays seem to be the preferred day regardless of.
I would be concerned about conflicting with farmers market on Tuesdays during the summer.
Ah, got it. Okay, fair point. Okay, I sense consensus, at least on a starting time, six thirty on Mondays. All right? People seem to like that. So let me, let me throw out the possibility of reducing the schedule to three meetings a month. One regular meeting, one regular study session, and one hybrid where we perhaps start with the regular meeting, because the public would come for that at, say, six thirty. Keep it to an hour, and then have maybe focused, maybe a quote-unquote lighter study session agenda during that hybrid combined meeting. And what I think that might require, and we have not historically done as much agenda work collaboratively with the manager, so maybe that's something we perhaps do as the mayor or the deputy mayor and the mayor and manager, kind of noodle over the topics, receive them from the city manager based on his anticipated workload and just chat about, gee, this is perhaps something that likely might be meatier, so it might be on the standalone study session day or whatever. I don't know, but could we go down to three with one regular, one flexed study session date, and one hybrid? If we streamline the topics for consideration on the hybrid date, both regular meeting and study session? I think we can. It just takes some tailoring. Mr. Brandsdeter.
Well, Mr. Mayor, again, that would not be my preference. My preference is for what we do, what we do now, and we even have the occasional
Special.
Other special meeting to do that. But if we were to go to three, and we were to have a regular meeting and a study session, and then an evening where we were going to do both a study session and a regular meeting, I think I would prefer to start that meeting a bit earlier, like at five, and do the study session first, and then go to the regular meeting at a time that is
Like six.
Well-established, allows for the public to show up and not be doing that, and us to do that. And it would also allow us, on a rare occasion, to have a topic at the study session that is on the agenda.
True, it would. Of course, that would require the clerk to do some sort of snack thing, because most people that we would want to have on council would probably be also working that day and racing from her day jobs to get to a five o'clock or five thirty meeting, which can be challenging for many folks. Mr. Coffield, what do you think from a workload standpoint? Could you accommodate a hybrid meeting date like that?
The short answer is yes, Mayor. The caveat is please know that there are things that come up. There are things primarily that come up that we don't have control over from external forces that we do have to get in front of you. A good example is the city hall beam issue. You know, is that something that I need to bring forward to you to share with you? Actually, the short answer is no, because really what I can do is just go out and bid the project and bring improvements to you. However, I do feel that it's important that you be made aware of this, and the reason I put it on a study session is because this is your building. It has an impact on you. So on one hand, I don't have to. On the other hand, I think it's good public policy that you have a clear understanding of what's going on there. So that's just an example of things that come up on an annual basis. But could your agenda be managed based on, you know, three meetings and the hybrid? The short answer is yes, we can, we can make that, we can make that work.
See the city attorney raising her hand.
One of the things I want the council to remember, because I hear the comments about getting in there on the agenda and whatnot, your city clerk, as well as the city manager and your leadership team, have posted all of the things that are on the agenda for the rest of the year.
True.
They're in the website. You know what's coming. If there's something that you don't like there or that you think takes more time, I'm pretty sure the manager is still talking to you guys every week.
Right.
He's notorious for his communication with council members. So those pieces are already in place, and I would I would just not want to see you add some new way of doing it when you already have the tools for doing that.
Well, and because all that is posted and listed, one wonders whether we can even consider going down from four to three, right? Because it's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on. Yeah.
Yeah, the point's not that you need to change, that you can't change the number of meetings. The point, the point isn't that you can't change the number of meetings. The point is that as far as your control over agenda topics and knowing what's coming, that's all there. That was my only point. It wasn't that you can't change the meeting days.
No, no, I've got it. And my point was to not unduly meddle, but to provide maybe feedback on what the council might find to be a topic more worthy of lengthier discussion than not. That was my point. Because there's some cities where the presiding person says that's going to get fifteen minutes, that's going to get twenty, that's going to get thirty, and that is it. And when that fifteen, twenty, or thirty-minute timeframe is done, it's on to the next topic. We tend to let things go to give everyone a say. Mr. Coffield.
So two things. One is, that is true. That is how most cities operate, but I will say, having worked for a number of cities, I have never found that to be effective. I'll just be right up front with you. I have not found that to be effective when it comes to good policymaking, and I think the way that you folks work, I think is very, very good. So I would not change your approach to that. I would not change. I know, I know it's a little late, but guess what? The work that you do in the community is well worth that time and investment. As far as moving things around, let me just say this. It's easier to move something out than to move something back, because like right now, we're all in on the comp plan.
Right.
So like, for example, this coming Monday on the study session. So you know, like, for example, the multifamily tax exemption. So that was direction that the council gave to the planning commission, so we want to come forward and give you an update so that the planning commission doesn't get too out ahead of you.
Right.
But you want to know something? That is, that's just part of the work plan because we know you want to get that done in 2024.
Right.
But that's an example of something that you could push out so that if you wanted to spend more time on the comp plan next Monday, no problem.
Absolutely.
That's, that's, that's very easy, easy to do. So.
Well, here's what I suggest we do is we don't make any decision tonight. I think we can sleep on it a little bit, and then maybe council comments next week. We can recirculate, you know, what we've all sort of thought on or slept on, and if we decide to make no change, that may be fine, too. But I do appreciate the city attorney and Mr. Coffield for noodling over this and getting the information with an eye toward maybe lessening the time, but not lessening the impact of our discussions. We certainly have good impact and good meaty conversations on all topics of interest. So unless folks have a burning desire to make some consensus directing, direction tonight, let's consider it for next time. Okay, very good. Mr. Coffield, anything else?
Yes, I do. I have a handful of updates, if that's okay.
You bet.
To drag it out a little bit longer. So, as you know, each year, the city, in partnership with the West Pierce Fire and Rescue, we host a 9/11 memorial service here at city hall, and likewise, the fire district, they host a much larger one that evening over at their headquarters where they actually have a memorial and such. The fact of the matter is, is that our event here, which is at noon on 9/11, has really been dropping off. It's really just kind of folks, you know, from city hall that show up, and I think there's a couple of reasons for that. One is when the farmers market moved to Fort Silicon Park. And then also, I think with the, just with the pandemic, I think that was one of the outcomes which really falls into place with the with the farmers market moving. And so this year, the recommendation is for the city of Lakewood not to have a 9/11 event, but rather continue to support West Pierce Fire and Rescue at their much larger event that would be held in the evening. And actually, if you haven't been to that one in the past, it's actually a very, very well done. I've attended on a number of occasions. But unless the council has any objection to that, that's our recommendation moving forward beginning, beginning this year. So I would just ask, you know, Mayor, if, you know, under council comments, if you wanted to noodle on that, I don't want to get out too ahead of ahead of you on that, but just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that's just a conversation we've been having with the fire district. The other is I know the council's aware that our sister city in the Republic of Korea, Gim Hay, has invited us to come visit with them in the middle of October. The, we need to respond on whether or not we are going to be sending a contingent by August 30th, so by the end of this month. We do know that a couple of folks from the Sister Cities Association plans on attending. The travel dates, it looks like, would be from Wednesday, October 16th, returning on Sunday, the 20th, with really their main event that weekend on Friday and Saturday. So again, Mayor, under council comments, if there's folks who are interested, they would really like to have, you know, a contingent of folks, you know, come. It'd be good to have at least one elected official if there's an opportunity to, to go over there. And then also, in case the question comes up, we are awaiting to hear back from our sister city in the Philippines, Buong, on their invitation to you folks to come travel to their, to their great city in the first part of January, but we just don't have the specifics on that yet. We're still waiting on that. As I had mentioned, coming up on Monday, a couple of items I just wanted to touch upon. The first is multifamily tax exemption update. Earlier this year, the city council did not move forward with a recommendation from the planning commission to extend the multifamily tax exemption area within the town center to be commensurate with our total CB, Central Business District area. However, what you did do is you sent it back to the planning commission to take another comprehensive look at that, including doing some more community outreach and public hearings and things along those lines. However, the planning commission does have some ideas about expanding, you know, the multifamily tax exemption into other parts of the city. And before your planning commission gets too far out ahead of you on that, we wanted to bring that back to you on Monday, along with some recommendations for the planning commission to consider and why as it relates to the multifamily tax exemption. The planning commission would be responsible for doing all the community outreach, the notification, the public hearings, all of that. But again, my motivation on bringing this back to you this Monday is again, so your planning commission doesn't get out too far. planning commission doesn't get out too far ahead of you in terms of what your thoughts are as a legislative body of where the, uh, use of this economic development tool is, 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 is most worthwhile. So again, um, more to follow on your meeting on, 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 on Monday. Um, the other on Monday, I just wanted to give you a heads up. So the ARPA funds, so I think as the council is very well aware, you've actually appropriated the whole 13.77 million dollars that you have received. The, um, you have until the end of this year to officially appropriate, um, all of those monies, and then they have to be spent by, um, the end of 2026. You have kind of a couple of loose ends hanging out there. Uh, the first is the million dollars that you've allocated to the Pierce County First Village. So that's still in limbo. Uh, the hearing examiner hasn't ruled on the various appeals associated with that. Um, our recommendation is that, um, since the council has allocated a million dollars in support of that project, that if, if the, if the project does not move forward by, like, say, in the early part of 2025, the rescue mission comes back and says, hey, we're not doing this, so that you then have the opportunity to make available those million dollars, um, have secondary language associated with that, which would be, and our recommendation, and this falls right in line with your recently adopted goals earlier this evening, that if those monies are not used for the Pierce County First Village, that they be allocated in support of Edgewater Park and Downtown Park, which is your number, or Downtown Park for sure is your, your, your number one goal for 25 and 26. So that's, that's one recommendation. Um, the second recommendation is actually, again, just, um, closing up some loose ends, if you will. Um, the council earlier this year, maybe it was last year, actually made a policy decision if there's any residual ARPA funds left over savings from any other appropriations that they are to go to the Edgewater Park Downtown Park projects. Um, right now, we're estimating that that dollar amount is $485,000. So we're just simply recommending that you do that commensurate with a policy that you have previously put in place. The third is that, um, there have been interest earnings that have been accruing on 13.7 million dollars that we have been drawing down the last few years. That currently totals 800, and I'm going to round up, $835,000 to date. Um, the recommendation there is to appropriate 500,000 of that in support of your street and pilot projects. Again, that is a key city council goal. The general fund, general government funds, I'll just give you right up front with you, we just don't have the capacity to fund that as we look out in the 25, 26 budget. However, here's an opportunity to be able to do that. Uh, the remainder of those funds, the recommendation is to help buy down the cost associated with the beams. And we're going to give you an update on that on Monday as well. That's approaching $700,000. But between the ARPA funds, some funds that are already allocated, and then some, some additional funds that, that, that we expect to identify as savings before the end of the year, we'll get that project completed as well. So again, just kind of wanted to bring it all together for you since really you've kind of, you got to get this done by, by, by the end of the year. Um, so again, just wanted to give you a, you know, a heads up, a warning order that that'll be coming forward for your review on, on, uh, Monday and then pursuant to, um, you know, the way the monies are allocated, you have a public hearing and then you would take action sometime in the September, October timeframe. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then as it relates to your calendars, Councilmember Lorisella was saying, got another farmer's market tomorrow night, a summer concert. Um, Mayor's Coffee House is going to be this, uh, Wednesday. And, um, we have the president of the, um, Fort Silicon Association, Walter Neary, a former, uh, city council member, as well as a, um, um, uh, well-versed, uh, expert in all that is Lakewood. He's written a couple of books about Lakewood. He is going to be coming in and, uh, just giving an overview to recognize 175 years of, of, of historic Fort Silicon, um, you know, and, and, you know, they, they, they first set up 175 years ago. Um, and then they were stood down. People like to say that was the first BRAC, uh, that actually occurred, uh, right after the Civil War. Um, and then, um, also just a friendly reminder that this Saturday, the youth council is holding, um, their big kickoff event, um, and, uh, they're going to be together for three or four, two, two to three hours, three to four hours. Um, however, they have invited all of you to come and do a little bit of team building from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and that's going to be out at the Fort Silicon Park. So I would certainly encourage you to go out there, take advantage of, uh, the new, uh, youth council for 2024, 25. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coffield. Any questions? Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, I hear, Mr. Coffield. Could you just clarify the thought around the million dollars in ARPA funds currently? Here, we've set aside looking for the Pierce County Village, and you suggested we can get around the end of 2024 guideline by having some alternative language in the allocation of those, such as it's allocated to this, but if not that, this, and going on. Is that, uh, is that so creative that it risks that maybe we'd lose that money if the Pierce County Village doesn't take place?
So, Councilmember, short answer, and by the way, I was just going to say it just like you said it, so I'm not going to repeat that. Uh, that's spot on. Um, but quite frankly, the answer is no, because it's no different than the language that you have right now, where any residual funds that are left over from current appropriations be deposited into, um, the Edgewater Park Downtown Park project. So no, we do not believe that is a, we believe that that is completely, um, a righteous policy decision, a policy directive of, of, of this body.
Right. That's reassuring.
Any other questions? Okay, um, how about, let me ask, on the Gimhee visit, we need to get some response back. Uh, I don't think I personally can go, uh, in October this year on that. And so I don't know if there is interest in going to that. I know some folks have expressed interest in possibly a visit to the Philippine Sister City in January. That may temper your, your interest here. It's a very gracious invitation, but it's just challenging since some of us went to China. And then we also went to Gimhee, I think, a year ago in May. So, yeah, any particular interest here? Mr. Branstadter?
Interest, yes, but the possibility of participating, no.
Yeah.
I'm actually going to be in Korea on those days.
Oh, great.
So for those, but I'm there for specific family purposes, uh, that, that, that involves some, some medical things and others. And so I'm not really going to be able to just carve out the three or four days that, 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 that they have set, set aside, even though I'm probably going to, at least on one of my plane trips, pass through that airport in Gimhee. So, um, while I would, uh, very much encourage us to, in some manner, support that, whether it's, uh, with, 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 with someone. I, I'm not able to personally adjust being able to go and do that.
No, I appreciate that. I think all of us, and good point on the language, all of us have an interest in attending because we value the relationship. It's just challenging from a schedule standpoint. So I don't see, uh, Mr. Coffield, I don't see any hands raised. So I think we'll probably have to send a thank you profusely, but it just isn't going to work.
Um, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We will send that. And then do you mind if we include in there kind of a, um, a heads up that we would like to invite them to come visit with us in 2026 as part of our
Sure.
30th anniversary of incorporation? Um, and then perhaps also look at visiting them in 2026? Because this festival is actually now in October. The one that we went last year was in May. So maybe kind of push it out another year or two years, rather, if that would be okay?
I think that would be fine. Yep, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wouldn't want, I, of course, would love to go, but I'm unable to also. But I would like to suggest that maybe we could send a council video message to them.
Absolutely.
Something like that. Maybe they could play it at their event, something, um, just to really communicate how we would have loved to have been there and our support, et cetera.
That'd be a great idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Councilmember Bell. Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, in the absence of further questions or clarifications from Mr. Coffield, let's turn to council comments. Uh, let's start with Mr. Lorisella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a few things this week. Uh, first, uh, looking forward to the farmer's market tomorrow, as I do every week. Uh, I also appreciated last week, the city's social media posts about the market. I thought they did a really good job of making it fun and talking about the vendors and, and sampling the foods and that sort of thing. So, so props to Brandon and her team. Uh, they did a great job. Uh, Wednesday, I'll be attending the South Sound 911 meeting. Uh, looking forward to that. Um, as we talked about the ARPA funds at the end of the year and the possibilities, uh, I would like to consider, uh, or for us to consider, the use of funds to potentially clean up the street ends like the residents did, uh, at the end of 100th Street, whether we have limited city resources that we could put towards that or coordinating with, uh, community groups that can do that. Um, and maybe that is a, a low-cost, common sense approach that we can take. Uh, and, and maybe as we talk about backup plans for our ARPA funds, if something doesn't go through, we can be even less specific and say that those funds go to our parks and lakes access instead of specifically Edgewater Park. That gives us the flexibility. Uh, I don't know how, how much we can walk the line before we, uh, are so generic that it gets us into trouble, but something I'd like to consider. Um, I, uh, my family and I weathered the storm on Saturday, as I'm sure everyone else did. And I wanted to give a shout out to our first responders for helping, uh, our, yeah, in our community. Uh, I was looking at the, the app on my phone for West Pierce, and, uh, there was a lot going on that night. So they, they did some really good work. So, so thanks to them. Um, on the meeting schedule discussion, uh, I appreciated the compromise that you suggested, Mr. Mayor, uh, with another caveat that we could always have the three weeks, uh, with that flexible one on the third week and holding a fourth week for as needed events, much like we do with the fifth week when we have it. Uh, it gives us that flexibility. We don't necessarily count on it, but it's, it's available if we need it.
Right, yeah.
Uh, the last thing I wanted to talk about was in regards to, uh, ordinance 810, uh, and my, my feelings on it. Uh, and we'll again, talk about it on the 16th. But my thoughts are that when talking about our public access points and the rights of our residents, uh, the rights of our residents to access our public lakes and parks, in my opinion, are not for sale, no matter what the price. Um, we're here to represent the people of Lakewood and make sure that they have access to what is already theirs. And I don't see, no matter what the appraisal comes back as, as it's something that we would consider vacating, uh, because it takes away from the access to the rest of our residents. So, thank you.
Very fair. Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so back at like the beginning of summer, there was a lot of concern with construction out on the west side of Lakewood and along Far West and Hipkins and all these places. And, and I live out there and, um, I know the city manager lives out there. I've, I've really, some of the projects are nearing completion. And I think that, uh, I just wanted to commend the city and the contractors. They've done a great job on, you know, timely construction, managing traffic. I have to navigate all the construction sites on a daily basis, and I think that it's been well done. Um, there was lots of folks that were concerned about, you know, one more detour and, you know, a detour to a detour to a detour. And, um, you know, there, there has been some challenges. The bridge, the bridge didn't help, I don't think, but, um, I just, yeah, wanted to commend the Public Works Department and, and the contractors that have been associated with those projects on doing a good job. Um, I also intend on going to the P-Rab Summer Social on Wednesday and hope to swing by the back-to-school event on the weekend and see if I can make it to youth council. I'm not sure, but thanks.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the police commissioning and the commendation ceremony today. It was so great to hear the stories about the community, about our, our police officers and just, um, it was just very positive, very uplifting. So I appreciated that a lot. And then also, I'm going to try to make the youth council retreat, but it might be closer to four, so I'm concerned about putting my name down on a list for something, but just, I can just show up. So there we go. Okay, phew, okay. I thought I needed to like slot in a game time or something. Okay, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bokey?
Yeah, I, I appreciated, um, Councilmember Pearson's remarks about construction. And I would also note today on the consent agenda that we passed, um, a, a $31 million, $31.6 million project list for sound transit that's going to really improve the roads and, and, and non-motorized transit in a, in a very high poverty area. And so it's a, a real win for us. It's going to take a while to, to implement. Um, but it is, it is a real win. Um, I also want to second Councilmember Lorisella's remarks about cleaning up street ends. Um, you know, you know, one of the reasons that people want to sell them is that you guys don't do anything with them. And, and part of me is, I think, almost 30 years into cityhood, we've done that intentionally. And so, um, I, you, you know, and not, not cleaning them up is, is just, we should be doing it. And I support the councilmembers' efforts to, to, to push that where we can at least hack down brass. And that would include Edgewater Park. I, I'm not quite understanding, I still don't understand, and I guess I'm missing something. Maybe I'm old, that we can't take down Blackberries. I mean, I just, I just am not, I don't quite understand that. Um, so I'll leave it at that. And so otherwise, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, or excuse me, Councilmember, uh, Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I plan to, um, attend the youth council's, uh, team building exercise that they've invited us to. Uh, it's a little vague what that's going to be, but I'll, I'll find out when I get there, I guess. I'll go through to do that. Um, over the past several sessions, we've gotten, uh, a lot of comments about street ends and, uh, and I think there's a, there is some, um, misconception. I concur that, that, that maybe we need to look at, um, identifying some street ends that the level of service for maintenance is upgraded from what it is now to none, because it's assumed they're not being used. Anyway, I think we've learned that that assumption is not true, so that we can, uh, go through and do that. But I think that there is a, another undercurrent to the comments that we've been hearing that we perhaps need to do some information correction about. It seems that because this is action around 100th Street, it's been on our agenda for hearings and this things to do that, that there's a perception that's being promulgated by some of the folks that are out there, that the city has been aggressively marketing and selling waterfront property. Um, in fact, I think, um, certainly in the last 15 years, I can think of only one instance of where that happened, and that was a very strange, convoluted thing of where it was, uh, there was a, it was a street end, but it wasn't recognized to be a street end, and the county had given it a parcel number and, and, and it went, went, it worked, uh, worked through those things. But I think that we need to correct the idea that we as a council have talked consistently, and over any number of years, about working to improve access to, to streets and that we have done it with, made the investments of where they were going to be most impactful, such as getting the ADA access in the existing parks. made the investments of where they were going to be most impactful, such as getting the ADA access in the existing parks and things to do that. But that, but that we have not been selling any public waterfront property or encouraging others to do that. Now, I mean, the situation we find ourselves in is a legitimate request from some property owners who are entitled to make it. And we certainly have done a good number of street vacations over the time. They just haven't been on, on, on the water. And they've all had some where we've always considered is there, is, is it in the public interest to do that? Often it's because it's, it's going to spur development, you know, economic or housing or, or something, something of that nature. But I think that we should need to get ahead of this idea, particularly if we're going to be pushing this off another month of, of doing something about what's the history of the city in terms of disposing of or selling waterfront property? And, and we haven't, we've actually gained waterfront property over the years that I've been on the council through the purchase of easements along Flat Creek, where we, we, we have some easements along a lot of those properties. It's going to prevent, it doesn't necessarily provide a lot of public access, but it certainly provided a lot of ecological, no, some loss ecological function, function to do that. And so I think it's, it's just an effort we should make, both in each of us individually, as, as people talk to us about it, but also perhaps through the Communications Department about making clear that this current action isn't something that the city encouraged or did. It's something that, but the city has not made a decision on it, but that we have to follow the process to make a decision. And it's been good because regardless of what we do end up deciding to do, it stimulated a lot of discussion that goes on that relates back to our direction to the city manager and to the, the Parks Board to definitely do a street end opening project in the next biennium as a pilot to prove that, that how we would go forward with them. And I, and I would support maybe in the next year of looking at making some, some effort to, to create and adopt adopt a spot program that relates to street ends, that we could allow responsible entities to, to do that. That we can educate about all, all, all the, all the rules around what you can do around waterways to do that. You don't necessarily just want to say, just go down there and do good things. You got, you got, you got to make sure that they understand all the, the rules about invasive and non-invasive of native species and don't move the rocks and whatever. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do also want to speak about the police report positions tonight. I think there's something, those are the stories that are never told. And when we talk about how we appreciate our police officers and the thing that they do, these are the things that the public never see. They only notice the wrong, something that, what they perceive as being wrong. So I think if we could come up with a monthly report, put a little bit of work on the chief. But, you know, talk about the different things that our police officers are doing, especially when they take the personally and help people to do stuff. That's just, that's just human kindness in my book. So anyway, I appreciate that. And it's something that I would love to see be more public than just once in a while. And last week, believe it or not, I made the farmer's market. I did, I enjoyed it, endured talking to the different vendors. And I even went to the Wally and the Beavers music. It was very, it was quite a lot of fun. Enjoyed it, even got to dance a little bit. But, and the Youth Council on Saturday, I do plan to be there. I just can't give a definite time that I can get there, but I will, I do plan to attend. So that's it. Thank you.
Great, very good. I will echo the comments on tonight's commissioning ceremony and certainly the accommodations made for those who did heroic actions and incredible policing work. It's a testament to the leadership at the Police Department and certainly the professionalism of each officer. And, and we love to applaud and celebrate those success stories. So thank you for bringing that forward. I will attend the coffee house on Wednesday. Coffee house, I guess the mayor's coffee house, the mayor will be there. That's not a bad thing. So I'll, I'll show up. And then on Saturday, the Youth Council, I will certainly be there for the three o'clock time slot. I do have a wedding that I have to be in later that afternoon. So hopefully my time will end pretty quickly, like at four, because I got to rush to the wedding and whatever. And then there is something that Maverick Gaming wants us to consider participating in that earlier morning. So I think if you can RSVP for me, I'll do the twelve noon or eleven o'clock to twelve time slot. Ms. Schumacher, I'll be happy to do that for them. And then finally, I want to provide in this council comment, a little council comment on the application for the vacation of one hundredth Street. And I find a little bit of neck strain, shall we say, at being spun by all the conversation of so many people that were against enhancing public access at Edgewater. And now we have a plethora of people that are demanding public access expansions down a tiny little street end on one hundredth. And, you know, Mr. Branstadter, I think, said it fairly, that the application was made in good faith. And council will have a chance to make consideration of however it comes to us. Here's some thoughts on that. Number one, I, I will disclose tonight, as I will disclose on the sixteenth, I know the Johnsons. They are friends of mine. I don't know the other co-applicants. I've never met them. And, but I understand their neighbors adjacent to that street. So I have some knowledge of the activity that's gone on, down on one hundredth that prompted this application. And I can tell you from my anecdotal understanding, it had nothing to do with quote unquote capturing the available public access on Lake Stillicum. It was all about providing a little safety and security for their home. We've already heard about the encroachment, which I'll comment on in a minute. But just this last Friday night, there was a police incident down at the end of one hundredth. There were three police officers either Thursday or Friday responding to yet another incident down there where there was some nefarious activity going on. And someone left an abandoned car. And I went down there Friday and Saturday, the darn car was still there, left abandoned at the street end. And it's that kind of stuff that prompted these neighbors to say, what can we do? We are tired of the activity down here. It's crazy. And so they made their application. And I've also heard a lot of stuff about this hundredth street, street end. But I'm also reminded that once in a while, the city, the city does spend a fair amount of money studying things where we have a lot of public input. And the two thousand nine study that was done on street ends was done after much public comment and review. And the Parks Advisory Board made recommendations, including, for whatever reason, whatever criteria they used at the time, labeling that as the fifth in priority. And under the recommendation for two thousand nine for one hundredth Street, it was vacate and sell. In two thousand twenty-three, when we reviewed the reports again, again, we prioritized the street ends, or at least looked at them. And one hundredth Street was, you know, still down as a possible street end, but low on the priority totem pole. So again, going to the point about gee, is this an untoward application to grab and secure public access to the exclusion of people in the city? I don't think so. And then I hear through the ether, well, gee, the city, it's not even legal under R C W thirty-five point seven-nine point oh-three-five to even consider this. Not in my interpretation. If you look at that statute, R C W thirty-five point seven-nine point oh-three-five sub one, it's in the disjunctive. And I've heard lots of commentary out there about the city has to prove that this property isn't necessary or available for port purposes, beach or water access, boat moorage or launching sites, park or public view. That's one of the criteria. But subsection one C says, because it's an or, it's not an and, it's or subsection one C, the vacation is sought to enable a city or town to implement a plan adopted by resolution or ordinance that provides comparable or improved public access to the same shoreline area to which the streets or alleys sought to be vacated, but had the properties included in the plan not been vacated. We passed the legacy plan for Edgewater by resolution or ordinance. And this is the hook, if any, that this application would be viewed by. And so I'm not suggesting anything other than we need to give it a fair shake if they come forward with the appraisal as suggested. The other thing, and for all the good reasons that you've all stated, if the council is inclined by consensus to not adopt the proposed vacation, which I completely respect, based on all the comments we've heard and certainly the consensus of council during that meeting coming September sixteenth, that we do need to figure out how we can consider some partial vacation of the street, maybe not the street end, not impacting public access to the water, but fixing and correcting the encroachment. So we don't have another situation. That's going to be a problem down the road for another homeowner in the city. And that I think we should consider doing. And that, of course, will be an appraisal of a lesser piece of property. But all I'm saying is the street end issue is a can that has been kicked down the road for years and years and years. It has been studied twice. Now you have well-meaning homeowners are saying like, one of the applicants stated during the public hearing on August fifth, which I stood up at four in the morning in a nine-hour time zone difference to hear every single public comment. And he said, we reviewed the two thousand nine and two thousand twenty-three reports, and we felt now was the time to make the application, given all the crap that we've experienced down at the edge of our properties. So again, I just appreciate your comment, Mr. Branstadter, that it was, these people are not bringing this in an effort to preclude the public from reasonable access. I think the application is sought consistent with the two thousand nine and the other reports to use those monies to improve comparable or better public access on the same shoreline somewhere else, AKA Edgewater. That's all I'm going to say. And it's been bantered about enough. I appreciate all the comments. Mr. Bokey.
I do want to know, because we've talked a lot about this missing appraisal. The idea of getting the appraisal isn't for it to be a checkmark to like, oh, they filled out an application, they did this.
Statutory requirement.
And they have, it is a statutory requirement, but we're also selling the property. So depending on what the value, we have every right to say if the value is high enough or not, right? We're, we're the arbitrators of that. We're selling the property.
I would let the city attorney weigh in on that, but I think fair market value is fair market value is determined by M A I appraisal. You know, again, whether or not the appraisal comes in at a value you want, you can always say no for any, any reason. It doesn't have to be based on appraised value. The council can certainly say no for all the good reasons we've heard through testimony and public comment. So it's not dependent upon value necessarily. The staff has to have that to make a package complete for you to consider it, in their opinion. So, okay, any other comments for the good of the order? Well, thank you again for your attention. We're adjourned.